You should be able to do it now.
Okay. And remind me where I'm going to to share.
Should be on your screen on the bottom should say share screen.
Uh, okay. Okay. So I I didn't really touch anything with salaries. I'll show you another sheet where I do have all of our updated information. Um, however, Karen printed out my operating expenditure. Um, and I don't have access in admins to pull up salaries and wages. However, it kind of is what it is. I mean, it's what the what the contract reads. Can you just close it? Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'll go over what I do have for the salaries, but first for operating expenses. Um, this year was quite different and that once Corona hit, I really put a lockdown on a lot of things. Um, and with our staffing, it was it was changed to minimal staffing to avoid getting some officers sick and whatnot being we're such a small department. Um, with that, a big cut was personnel training. I mean, nobody was going to classes really outside and there was there wasn't too much online classes. So, um, I anticipate schooling going back in session this year at some point. Uh, and that's going to be one thing that I'll get to here. So going item by item, our equipment maintenance. The we only ended up expending about 1,200 there. And a lot of that is my account was taken out of different other accounts. So that line item is going would be a little bit higher, but it was taken out of other accounts for items for my equipment maintenance. Uh, one expense that I'm going to see this year is that one of the computers in the cars needs to be replaced and that's about $2,000. So I am requesting 4,000. You'll see to the left column there. School programs and relations. We didn't spend anything because we didn't have any programs that we could run through to school because of COVID. I'm going to continue to ask for what I asked for the previous year to do. Uh, we had anticipated to start up the block watch again. However, that didn't happen. Uh, and the criminal justice club that usually run in the school anticipate doing that again, which we didn't do last year. Uh, the storage fee I'm looking to cut because I'm looking to get out of the storage unit. Joe Mexi delivered the recycling shed and I was just gonna take my stuff and put it in there that's in the storage uh, facility up there on 57. I'm just waiting for him to to put in the ramps to get into that shed and then to secure the door. Uh, and now that we have the snow, um, I'm just hoping I can get to that the next couple of months and get out of that unit. So I'm basically cutting half of what I budgeted for our annual fees for the storage center up there. Vehicle maintenance, vehicle maintenance was was high last year. And I think you did. Everybody get the email, the expenditure report from basically from our admin system before this.
That's in their packets and in their email.
Okay, in that it has an expenditure of every line item in my in my accounts. Uh, vehicle maintenance, one of the the big hits that I was taking in that was the three older cars that we have. The the 2015, I think 15 Explorer, the 16 uh, interceptor car and then the, I believe it's a 2012 Charger. Um, those, those three vehicles accounted for about a little over $8,000 in maintenance. So um, the the Explorer is going to be replaced with a Tahoe that I ordered and that by the time I got that order in, I'd order a 2021 and then uh, GMC had their Chevy had the strike, so got pushed off. So I'm still waiting for that car. It's supposed to be here, I'm told next month. Uh, and that will replace that Explorer. The next vehicle be replaced will be the interceptor car, the 2015, uh, and that's when I'm asking for a replacement Charger for that. And uh, then my next for next year, I'm looking to replace the the 2012 Charger. That's a for the detective right now. So not getting a lot of patrol use. It's because he's in the detective bureau. So I'm looking to cut that $8,000 and 11,000 vehicle maintenance budget. Uh, next line item, the air cards that that's internet cards for the car, but however, that's coming out of or it's always come out of the the general fund for the phone, cell phones and internet service. Uh, so that didn't doesn't come out of my budget. The next item, the police computers. This is not for the maintenance of our computers in the department because that's again something a general item that's coming out from all town computers and all maintenance. This is specifically for a records management system. And I I increased that $1,000 because of the anticipated class two officer. We had to add a user to that program. So it will probably be between 500 to 1,000 to add another user. Uh, uniform cleaning was low and that's mainly because we went to a modified uniform for COVID and officers in these modified uniforms, they were washing them at home. They didn't need to be dry cleaned. So we ended up uh, not paying a lot of dry cleaning. However, again, we are starting to get back into a full uniform. So I anticipate that figure going up. Um, it's probably not going to be $1,200. Uh, it's going to be probably under that because we're already two months into the year. However, I'm just keeping that the same in case publications and schools uh, reducing that. I don't anticipate us having to get any books this year. Uh, updating law books and whatnot because I did just do that. Miscellaneous supplies. This is one item that I guess Karen's not on. I just wanted to ask her about because there's a there was money that was put into miscellaneous supplies. I think that was because to cover the budget. Um, so in the center column, under the expenses right here, you're going to see it says a minus 652. I mean, that actually should be a plus, but um, I'm just asking for 300 in that account just to cover any miscellaneous items, office supplies. We were a little bit over a budget. I'm just asked for same $1,000. We're over budget because we had to um, didn't anticipate the amount of just USB drives that we had to buy for for evidence and whatnot to provide to prosecutors' offices and whatnot or for evidence for cases. I do need some DVD burners, towers to burn our DVDs that has a that broke. I wanted to get it last year, however, it just didn't work out. So that is something little bit of money that I'm gonna have to purchase.
Rich, I got a question for you, Rich.
Yeah.
The the columns, you have the 2021 request. You have what you actually incurred in 2020 and then you have what you put in the budget for 2020.
Correct.
So the final column is a difference not between the budgeted amount and requesting. It's what you incurred and what you're requesting.
Yes, it's what I expended.
Yeah, what you expended. So
Yeah.
I think for our purposes, I think we wouldn't really want to see the difference between the budgets more than the what you incurred.
Okay.
See if it went up or down.
Okay.
I don't know if everybody else, what everybody else thinks about that. Because for me, I want to see, okay, this is what you had in the budget last year and this is how much more or less you're requesting this year. And I could figure that out. I'm just saying.
Okay.
Because I don't know that the I don't know that the expense incursion really means much to us. It really, what I'm concerned about is how much more do you want to add or take away from last year's budget?
You got it. I'll just change the, I'm just gonna change that column to taking.
We can keep that. You can keep the column and just add another column if you want. That's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna do that. I just didn't want to confuse anybody. So, uh, but if you want me to add a column and I'll just deduct from budgeted instead of expended.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know what else feels about it. Just.
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, duty supplies, uh, increasing that because I need to, we're going to be having to require getting another four bulletproof vests expire this year. Uh, as to those estimated are about 4,600 and for all of them. And our state grant only, we only get about 1,500 from our state grant on bulletproof vests. I mean, that's what we got last year. I don't anticipate us getting much more this year. So that I'm going up personnel training. Again, I said, we took a lot not out of that. So last year we took out 1622. Uh, I do want to try to get the detective certified with cellphone analysis. Right now, if we have a cellphone and we got to get analyzed, we have to go to the prosecutor's office and we have to wait. And there's a, there's a wait. There's not a lot of people up there. Um, I just want to get them certified and use their equipment when he has that. Um, a lot of our cases are taking up a lot of time with that and it it's just, um, it's a great training to have. Um, and that's what I'm anticipating. I, what else? We have uh, the dues account uh, about the same and our evidence, same, I'm asking about the same, I'm asking for a little bit less and miscellaneous expenses up a little bit. Because I don't know, I think money was taken out of another account because that was showing only 421. So I'm just asking for a little bit less 2,000 as opposed to 2,300 requested last year. Uh, purchase of a police car. Uh, that we're gonna, we should be getting off of one lease. And that's what I'm asking for to get into another lease. So it would increase. I'm estimating about 500 more from last year's expenditure. I don't know exactly what happened. Um, from what I budgeted was 36 for our leases and we ended up expending 47 in our leases. Uh, I think I thought that was because Karen had made a double payment on one of the leases by accident. Ever, um, yeah, confirm that. Uh, that is my operating. I will uh, make another column for the difference in last year's budget to this year's budget. Uh, and I can send that out as soon as we get off here. I'll just start that column and auto sum them.
Rich, is the is the pay, is the salary or hourly rate for the class two anywhere in here?
Uh, yes. So this is, I I submitted that last year's with the budget, so I just kept it on for this one. So the class two, I mean, depending on, can you see my screen already? Okay.
That's not on the screen I'm looking at unless that's a different. Yeah, I see. I gotta go to another. Okay.
Okay, so uh, so I just for the class two, we had advertised, I think between $25 and $30, 30 hours a week. So this is how much it would be if we uh, salary wise with whatever we pay them. Um, I have every officer's salary in there with all their items. Uh, I didn't. So are there's nothing much to change there. I mean, it's just like I said, salaried. So um, the only thing is I don't know exactly. I don't know what the holiday payout was because I don't have access to it. I don't know exactly what the overtime expenditure. I don't know if you guys get those reports. Because like, I am, I'm, I don't know what's going on, but I'm restricted or I can't access that on admins. Uh, is there any questions?
This is for two um, class two officers?
No, the first is, this is how much it would be if it was $25 an hour, 30 hours a week. This is just showing you what it would be if it was 30 hours a week, $30, 30 hours a week, what that, if you.
No, I like the idea of two, the more the better.
Well, if you want to, I mean, that we I can do that. Uh,
I really think with um, the more traffic we're gonna have, the more added things to our township. I really do think the more the better. I I see tractor trailers everywhere now.
It's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah. And if that class two would be taking care of that, I think the more the better. I really do.
Yeah, there's so much and they're getting really brazen. I followed a truck yesterday across Strikers Road. He actually went through the stop sign at 519 by Rastelli. He didn't even stop.
Wow.
He went up, he ran right through the yellow lights at 22 and 519. Then down 22. I actually had to speed up. I got up to 60 and he was still pulling away from me. He was going to the, I bet you 65 to 70 miles an hour. On 22 in front of Walmart here by the Wawa. I couldn't believe it. It's a local truck. I could say his name right now, but I don't. But uh, it was a local, local truck from Strikers Road, one of those businesses there. And guy, the guy was going 65 to 70 miles an hour by Wawa on 22. I couldn't believe it.
I think we should.
And we even in and out of traffic. If somebody was too slow in the right lane, he's going to the left lane and he cut back to get in the right lane to go on to 78. I mean, he was horrific. I wish I could have stopped him.
Wow.
We should, we should deputize Bob and allow him to give tickets out.
Mayor, on a, on a call yesterday, we were on a call and we issued two sums as well on a call uh, for two, uh, two truckers yesterday. So.
Good.
Try. I see the guys out here quite a bit. The other day I saw Sergeant McLaughlin with a car pulled over. I've seen him quite a bit. So I mean, I know they're trying to do the best they can, but they they can't spend all their time on these streets because they have the rest of the township patrol. I understand that. But I I think they try to do a good job. I mean, there's a couple of them I see all the time. I see Sergeant Desopelis all the time around here with them and stuff. So and I don't mean not to say guys, I don't see the guys who are on it too in the morning. So, uh, but yeah, I see him trying. I mean, I can't complain about that.
Yeah, and just, just keep in mind that we're probably around 10% of total warehouse buildout right now. So multiply whatever trucks you see right now, multiply it by like a tenfold in the future.
I know. That's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying too. I know it's a lot to ask, but we need more forces out there to let them know not to come here. Or when you use our roads, you're gonna get a ticket. You're gonna be stopped.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
So do you want me? So I do. I am still in the interview process of um, the applicants for our class two. Uh, I hope to finish that up next week. And uh, do you want do you want me to explore hiring two or what would you like then?
I would like to. What do you say, Bob?
Uh, so you, if you're willing for the two, we're talking about doubling either one of those costs, the 39 or the 46 to
That, yeah. I mean, uh,
I, yeah. I'd love to do it, but I don't know if I can afford the two.
Yeah, and I think maybe as
I was gonna say, how about you do one and then price went out for half that time and maybe in July we we could swing it.
Okay.
And that would be in time for you for vacations in the summer too.
That's a good idea. Can you do that, Rich?
Budget one and a half, Rich, and we'll see how that number flies.
Okay, uh, do you want? Well.
I mean, that's.
I don't, I just. Yeah, I just don't know which, I mean, basically it would be going for, I can provide all these numbers to Karen or our incoming CFO. Uh, the only thing is I don't know. It's going to be up to you guys whether we're doing the $25 hour or the 20 or $30 an hour. So you can see it does change uh, about seven, $8,000 there.
And what's, what?
Uh, here's my feeling on is this interview and whoever you think is the best, but we're talking about this in public. If anybody looks at it and I'm applying for the job, I'm gonna say I want the 30, but I would go with who your two top candidates are and if if one of them would say, I I'm not coming for less than 20 an hour, I guess you gotta try to meet him if that's what you feel. I I definitely don't want to go over 30. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, well, I'll be in, I'll be in touch with you next week.
Okay, me. I'm not the only one here. Anybody else want to add to that? I'm I'm just giving my thoughts. That's how I think out loud. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
I if you're gonna ask me, you know, which one do you want? I'm always gonna go for the lower one.
Yeah.
Unless you're telling me, unless you're telling me it can't work.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I just, uh, just letting you know, yeah, because it's, you know, obviously I know you know, but it's in your field, but what the end result is with that. So I will work to, I'll just work that figure in and like I said, provide it to uh, Karen or whoever that may be to work into a ending salary anticipation.
If they keep treating police the way they have been in this country, guys aren't going to come to work for less than $100 an hour.
Yeah.
Well, this town, this town doesn't do that. This town.
I have a guy, a guy seems retired, like just want to get away from it because the treatment is so bad in the country by, not by people, by politicians. That's what's so unbelievable about it.
Yeah.
So, uh, the only other thing is I did provide the sick time payout. It's blocked over here, but or no, I'm sure you see it. I have, uh, so are the contract provides that you can't pay above 15,000 whether they have sick time and um, this is if they left today, what you, you'd have to pay them for their their sick time. That's not really, I don't think that's a concern with you. I think that's just a concern for the auditors.
Okay.
Um, I think that is about it. I, the crossing guards, obviously, I just budgeted the same as what was in the budget last year. It's going to be lower because of the reduction in the use form for the schools. But um, that's, that's about it. Is there, the only other thing I just wanted to bring up is the the large items. Uh, I broke down the estimated cost of the Charger. Uh, we would uh, I anticipate if we do that three year lease like the other vehicles. Uh, I do want to replace AEDs. We have, uh, unfortunately, we had three AEDs that broke this year. Uh, or I should say in 2020. Um, and they're older ones. I can't get parts for them. They're discontinued. So I had to buy new ones. I got a quote on uh, certified fish ones. I got a quote on brand new ones. So the number that I have there is for the, uh, obviously the the two there. Um, body cameras, I'm just gonna bring that up. I don't know if everybody's following what's going on with the news with that and the state, the attorney general is a, has the mandate, but he's updating it. Supposed to come out in June mandating body cameras on all patrol officers. Uh, we don't have any body cameras. Did apply for that grant years ago, however, and we rewarded the grant. However, the grant only paid for the cameras, which is nothing compared to the cost of buying a server and the software for that. Um, I think the grant only covered like 6,000 of it and it was going to cost me about, I don't know, 30,000 back then. So I did not, I did not go for it. Um, the state is anticipating giving grant money for these cameras, but only for the cameras again. So we're in the same boat where they're probably only give, I don't know, depending on how many cameras you get. Few thousand dollars, but then you have to pay for the new server you're gonna need because we would need another server. We don't have the space. And the software to jack whatever you have to redact, whether you have juveniles or or what have you. Uh, medical that you have to uh, blur out and that footage and then the the man hours it's going to take to review those and burn the DVDs and answering Oprah requests because those do increase once people find out that you have body cameras. Um, so the number that I provide there, I am working on trying to get a number, uh, an estimated number of what it's going to cost us, but that number is what I got from another local chief of what he paid for a department similar to our size. Uh, 30,000, 40,000. Uh, I did not get the the approval last year for that sign board, so I just left that on there. Or the mobile sign board with the radar as well.
Right. The the body cameras, I know, maybe I was reading, I didn't pay attention. State's talking all for any reimbursement for that?
Just for the cameras themselves.
Okay, so it's 35 to 40 just to for the hard software, I guess, to save all the footage and stuff?
Uh, well, that the 35 to 40 would be buying, would be the whole package. That's what it would cost. That I would anticipate the state giving us maybe, I don't know, let's say $6,000 of that. Mm hmm. I I don't know yet because they haven't worked out those details yet and um, but the cheapest part of that whole thing is the cameras and that's what the what the state's saying they're only gonna pay. So Yeah. Um, if they, I I just, I don't see how it's gonna work because they tried this. Uh, I know you know, I'm there with the with the dash cams on the cars. They were gonna mandate it, but they weren't gonna pay any money towards it. I don't know how they can mandate something and not give us any money to pay for it. I mean, how are towns gonna pay for smaller or large ones? Um,
Well, you know, the one you're gonna pay for. They're gonna pay for them in Burke and Essex and Hudson County. He's not gonna pay for them in Hunter and Warren. That's what's gonna happen.
And I mean, I'm, I am 100% behind the body cameras. Um, I wanted to get them back then, however, you know, it just didn't work out money wise. Uh, and I did kind of want to wait to see how everything went with the pilot program with the state police and and there's.
I mean, I'm all for the cameras too. I they, I think they're worth every penny, but it's a lot of money for a municipality and.
Um, but yeah, I would, I would think that if anything like that was was obtained, it would have to be a capital expenditure.
Yeah. Well, the AEDs, I, there's no way I I would vote not to get those. So I just get the best price you can on them. That's my feeling. I, there's no way. There should be a car on the road without AED and that's my personal opinion. So.
Yeah, uh, that and those AEDs, that includes the one in the building here that that one's gone too. So actually that would make four down.
Right. Okay, so one of them, one of them would come out of
Buildings and grounds.
Building and grounds. Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I don't have anything else. Anybody have any questions or?
No, hey, chief, the sheet that you were just reading, can you put that up on the screen? I still have uh, the employees to pay the officers. And and your IT cost. Where did that show up at?
Uh, well, the IT is, that doesn't come out of my budget. That comes out of the uh, that's one expense that's paid overall by the town. I guess that.
All right, okay. I thought it might be. I wasn't sure. All right, okay. I thought it might be, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I, it was on, um. So typically in the past, that was how we did it. Uh, this year. Um, in the change with the, uh, different, uh. Assistant CFOs, I guess, uh, it started coming out of my budget. Which. I noticed in it, uh, I didn't, I didn't budget that, um, and I was paying, you know, everything as far as any, any IT work in the town and then also, uh. Um. The laptop for the, uh, CFO during, uh, COVID and whatnot, so she had taken that all off and if you did, uh, look at the budget account status transaction report. It'll have like a, a lot of numbers in there for minuses and pluses where she, uh, took it out, so. It does look a little confusing, but, uh, in the end she, uh, got me all squared away with it, so, um, I would have to, uh. Ask her for that number where she, what account she transferred to to take it out.
It's all in the IT and the admin and executive, which was sent under my information.
And. Paul, Paul, you said you can't see the, uh, the form that I have up, the memo for you? For, uh, the town.
You don't have it up, Rich? You still have the, uh, officer's pay rates up?
Yeah.
Uh. I pulled it up on my email, that I, that's what I'm looking at, but.
Yeah, I'm looking at, if I'm looking at it on my screen, do you know why? Let's see here. Uh, screen sharing, it stopped. Okay.
That Frank, I think disabled it on you because you're asking for large purchases.
That's okay. I still like them. Uh. Yeah, I'm sorry, did, um, now I see that, uh, I didn't have the, uh. The personnel salaries and whatnot. Did you, did everybody see that in the email I sent or do you want me to put that up on?
Michael, you had the personnel one up. That's what was on the whole time you were talking. I think that's, that's why Paul was asking for the the memo, so he didn't know where you were getting these numbers for the, the car and the AEDs and stuff, I believe, right, Paul?
That's correct, okay. I didn't do the share screen before, I apologize. I wasn't familiar with it.
It's, it's unacceptable at your age.
I know.
At over 50, you could say that. Under 50, I don't wanna hear that.
But, but mayor, I delegate. I make sure I have people that do that for me.
That's a good answer.
I learned that in my old age. So if I, um, though, if I fix those figures with the difference of the budget last year to this year. I don't think there's gonna be, uh, much of a change. Because the increase in the, uh. In the car is gonna be equaled out by the. Uh. The decreases ahead and other line items.
Okay, anybody have any other follow-up questions or any?
I don't.
Chief, that's a, uh, that's a leased vehicle, correct?
Uh. That I'm showing up there?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be an overall figure, then that would have to be leased, so.
Right, so we're not looking at a $45,000 increase in '21.
A 15, well, so we have a. Uh. We had a truck on there that was about 15 and we're putting a new 15, so it's gonna swap out.
So it's wrapping, yeah, yep, one's falling off, one's coming on, good.
Now, the only thing was, though, was the. It would, 36 was budgeted last year for leases and it should've been 47.
Okay. Uh, I, uh, I did write that down to see if there was a double payment on one of the lease, uh, police car leases. So I'll follow up with that one.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, before you go, Rich, uh, I just wanna thank you for, uh, you and your department's, uh, responses this week with the snow. I. I did see them around quite a bit. In fact, the first day of school opened, I saw them at various, uh, points where the sidewalks weren't. Shovelled yet and I saw them parked and actually, uh. Helping with traffic while students had to walk in the street to get around where the sidewalks weren't, uh. Shovelled, like, saw them in two or three locations doing that and, uh, I just wanna thank you, uh, for your response and. I I don't know, I I I hope I, I did something yesterday that I I believe everybody agreed with, but. I had Lisa get some lunch for, uh. All of the DPW workers and the police, uh. For their efforts this week, just as a little thank you for the township committee, uh, so Lisa picked up some. Food from ShopRite for them and put a little spread out for them yesterday at lunchtime to to thank them for everything and. I don't know if Joe Mexi's on, he probably isn't. We board him last week, so, uh, but. Uh. The road crew, I don't know if anybody else got any complaints. I got one email. And it wasn't really a complaint. The guy had a valid thing and we took care of it the next day. He said a nice letter, a nice email back thanking for the quick response and stuff. So. Unless anybody else got one, it's pretty remarkable for a three-day event that we only got one. And like I said, it wasn't even really a complaint. Uh, and it was. It was in, it was in a cul-de-sac where there was so much snow, we had actually trucked the, trucked the snow out. We couldn't even plow it because if, if you plowed it in one section, you blocked somebody else's driveway. So, you know, the DPW had to go up the next day with loaders and actually truck the snow out of the cul-de-sac, but anyway, I, I did send them lunch, uh, thanking them on behalf of the township and, uh. I I just wanna let yous know and I I thought everybody did a good job and like I said, the the police department, I saw them. You know, actually getting out of their car and helping students walk around areas and stuff and, uh. And I always appreciate that. I I think I, we said this last year, we have a good, good work crew with DPW and the police. We we don't get a whole lot of, that's not my job or that's too much to do for more employees and. And I I just like to recognize and at least show some appreciation to you, so thanks for everything, Rich.
Oh, thank you. I, uh, you beat me to it. I was kinda waiting till the end to, uh. Thank, uh, everybody. We, uh, we were tied up yesterday, but, uh, we alternated and, uh, got to. Uh. Take advantage of the, uh, the food, so thank you and, uh, thank you, Lisa, for picking it up.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, um, chief, I had spoke to Joe. Um, when the students returned to school on Thursday, I asked him if the school consulted with him, uh, and he says that they consult with them on the roads, um. In a time where we were doing virtual and all that good kinda stuff, uh, there was no way the children should've been, uh, walking to school on on Thursday. Uh, particularly South Main Street was, uh, a mess, which in Bob, I'm assuming that's where you saw the officers protecting children?
Yeah, I saw them there. I saw them on Greenwood Street. I saw them a couple of locations.
Yeah, and and the school made a, a really bad decision by having school, especially when you have the opportunity to do virtual schools right now. Um, that was my personal opinion, um. And as for a follow-up complaints, uh, I really wish sometimes my cell number's not up on the, uh, website, um, because I did receive quite a few. And, uh, you know, I'm taking, you know, 30-inch storms are epic where. We as a community aren't really set up to deal with that type of a situation on any kind of a regular basis. People did what they can do. You know, one of the biggest primary beef I'm getting is that in certain communities, the snow is three foot off the curb and nobody can get mail. Uh, that was the big one. But again, they're doing that, but as far as the PD goes, you know, I I, you know, didn't get yays or nays one way or another, so obviously they did their job, uh, including, uh, one officer coming down on me, but I'm not getting one of the properties that I take care of cleaned up properly or quickly enough. Uh, but it was an epic storm.
Yeah. Yeah, but like I said, the, you know, the couple, the one that I got was, uh, there was just so much snow, there was nowhere to move it, and the guy was very understanding about it when I explained this. Look, there's nowhere to push it. They push it from your, in front of your driveway, goes to the next driveway. They're gonna come in tomorrow and truck it. He said a nice thank you to Joe and to me about it, so.
Yeah. I I received, uh, a call from Eric Goletta and, uh. He he couldn't thank them enough. I know he sent them food. I believe yesterday.
I knew somebody was sending them pizza and stuff, too.
Yeah, it was Goletta.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, same, same thing. I I was kinda worried about Thursday, um, with the snow too, like Paul said. I, I don't know why they didn't just do virtual. That is, you know, alarming that they didn't do that.
Okay, Rich, you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Anybody have anything else, or Rich?
No.
Go enjoy your day, Rich. Thanks for everything.
Thank you. Does anybody want me to drop off any of this paperwork at their houses?
Nope. Nope, I can print it off here. I'm good.
I can.
Lisa, you can eventually print me hard copies on all that, right?
Sure, yep.
I went down to town hall this morning. I thought they wouldn't be there and they weren't, so, but at some point I'd like to see hard copies.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll print them right now and just put them in your mailbox.
We, we could just electronically put denied, 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 Rich, so it's, it's not, it's not gonna be hard.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Okay, thanks. Have a good day.
Thank you, too.
Okay. You wanna go on to Lisa? Lisa, you wanna go over yours?
Yeah, it's pretty brief. Um. I provided you guys with the overall, uh. Estimated cost if there were a 3% increase for all non-police. Uh, for the record storage, um, I was hoping that we could keep that additional money in there. It was. I I couldn't get a final number from Karen, but that was for, you know, additional hours and us going to the school and all that. Tammy and I were able to do the bulk of that. Um, during normal hours, uh, thankfully, you know, there was enough coverage in the office that we were able to take care of that and. Uh, went in on a few Saturdays, um, and got a lot of that taken care of, but just in case with the. You know, the the remainder that we have to go through and then transferring everything over to the Legion eventually, I just thought if we could leave that and I, quite frankly, I'm not even sure that I could identify where Karen has it in the actual budget. Um, but when we sort that out, if we could leave that. Uh, the one increase that I didn't include in my report, but I wanted to just remind everybody about, I think it falls under. Buildings and grounds with Joe, but I couldn't recall seeing, seeing it in his budget, was that with the new lease with the Legion. That'll be an increase of about $7,200 a year, uh, for the next two years. However. We were anticipating that would be offset by. The the hundred or so dollars a month that we'll save on the, uh, the storage container that's in the DPW lot and then also the $100 that the PD is currently paying for the storage unit. Uh, which would save about 2,400, so. I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure where in the budget that's gonna be, but it would be about a $5,000, you know, anticipated increase for the year, uh, the next two years for the Legion rental. I would like to, and again, this might come out of buildings and grounds. I'm not sure if Joe included it, but for 10 additional filing cabinets, again, this year, we purchased 10 last year. I'm asking for 10 more. Um. For codification, I think we can decrease that line by 3,000. I was able to get everything updated. Last year, the, I think I included the whole quote for you guys just to see that we were able to take that through to even, at the end of the year, we had kind of a, a rush on additional ordinances. And including that, we'll. Still be able to, that'll be charged, I understand, to 2020, the $9,000 that we had budgeted, so. And I'm also getting a few new code books. And so if if each year we can get, you know, two new complete books, then I'll be confident that everybody's books are actually current and up-to-date in zoning, land use. The mayor should always have a copy and then, of course, for my office. Uh, the archival of records, this was discussed a little bit, um, last week when Paul brought it up. I only have the one quote so far, which I included in your package. And I I was anticipating another one for today, however, I checked my email going into the meeting and they did not get it to me. I'm estimating that, you know, the per box cost is gonna be around $350. And that price was provided to me. You know, meaning that there was a certain number of letter size, legal size, and then, uh, the large format. So it's a good way to just estimate that. If there is money, you know, if 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 from that one-time auction proceed, if we could. You know, put 40 into a septic and then retain the other for some records archiving, I think that would be a great way to spend that money. My suggestion would be to start with. The land use and zoning documents that we have to keep. Um, and also there's, you know, certain payroll records that have to be kept for 75 years. And they can be pretty bulky, so that would be another item hopefully we could do. It's really a situation where I need to get back out into the storage unit and take a look, um. Uh, and just get a better idea, but I was hoping that if you guys could at least keep in mind about 25,000 for getting that project off the road, uh, off the ground this year, that would be good. Uh, for the continuing education, uh, again, this is one of the line items that's a little, it's, it's interesting between the admin and executive. Um, reports from admins versus the clerks. I don't wanna bombard Karen with this at this point, but when a new CFO gets on board, I'd like to have clarification as to where that money comes out of. Um, but I, if we could have 1,500 budgeted for that total, um. Having that cover things for Joe and myself and Tammy, all those annual recertifications. I don't know if that simplifies it in the budget, if if we would rather keep it separate, but it was too hard for me to follow and I just wanted to keep, keep that in everyone's wheelhouse that. Uh, really no classes were taken last year and so the DCA did extend everybody's certifications by a year. But I think that there will be catch-up, especially, uh, you know, between DPW. And my office and now we, of course, we have Tammy who is a certified registrar. She'll have to start taking recertification classes for that as well. Hi. What a cutie. She's big, Paul. So, um, nothing, nothing much. I mean, every year I ask for that, uh, small budget, not as an additional budget, but that we be authorized to, um, utilize up to $1,000 of the celebrations budget. To do small thank you things like the one that we did yesterday. Uh, it doesn't really matter to me if it's separate or if, you know, by authorization of the mayor, we can do that, but I I just like to keep that out there. For the 2021 Mel Employment Practices, we have a, you know, an update that is due. This is something that we've talked about. Uh, me taking the reins with, I do it in Bloomsbury. I believe the last time we had an update, we paid a labor attorney, uh, around $10,000 to handle that function. So something that I'm throwing out there, we could, um, save money with that. And all of those updates are due, I believe, at the end of June this year. Uh, under the admin executive, uh, reports from admins. Again, it's a little confusing. You can see that, uh, I wanted to point out that our advertising costs just between 2018 and the current have just dropped dramatically. Uh, it is a little confusing because some are charged into the clerk's line and some are charged into. An admin line, but still overall, we were saving a lot of money by adjusting those newspapers and where we publish, uh, which, you know. Money, money well saved. I wanted to point out the lines are overextended in the admin are. The website and also our IT services, and I know we bombarded Cindy a lot this year with. You know, Zoom meeting notifications and all of those updates and things, you know, due to COVID, it's not really something that we could avoid, so I don't know if if that might. Get a little better in 2021. I guess it depends on when we can stop doing all of this. Uh, and as for the IT, I know that we overexpended that and that was something that we had discussed mid-year last year. Wanted to remind the TC that part of that, I I believe, is just we had never anticipated that, I think it's a $505 per month cost. For that, um, daily backup of the police department. We had authorized the purchase of that. I think it was like an actual new server, um, separate to. Just store the backlog of information and the video footage and everything that Rich has to back up, and so that's part of that cost, which is over $6,000 a year. And maybe with a new CFO, we would wanna sort of separate some of those numbers out, but as, you know, Rich alluded to and. Answering Paul's question, right now it's all under the IT line, I believe. In the admin.
30,000, what do we have it for? What do we have it budgeted for last year? The IT service?
Let me see. We had budgeted 25 and we spent a little over 34, so we had to do a $10,000 transfer in November.
Okay, I I just didn't know what we had budgeted for the, uh. I, I just didn't know what we had budgeted for the uh IT.
And, and also part of, I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't sure if you meant increase it by thirty thousand or if we're increasing it from like twenty-five to thirty. That's why I asked it now.
Yeah, I think that because we, I, I'm just, again, I'm not really clear without talking to Karen or having her here to speak to it. You know, part of those, the new computers for us to be able to work remotely, you know, we had gotten one for the police department, um, different purchases like that were made. A lot of that uh was gonna be covered under that grant. So it could be that some of this just hasn't, John Mooney, you might be able to update this, but some of that money might might have been grant money and it just isn't showing in the, the spreadsheet that I have.
Mm-hmm. Right. What, what they were doing with the grant at the end of the year, and I guess technically wasn't a grant, it was just a reimbursement of funds. So if there were expenses in the budget related to that, uh, then she backed them out when she received the grant more, the, the reimbursement money back. So you probably wouldn't even see it hit into any totals because it's gonna be an in and an out and wash us through. Um, but as far as going into detail on the, you know, different like IT lines and stuff like that, it could be done. It's just an undertaking and, you know, the, the state of New Jersey is trying to keep all towns the same and try to track uh all expenses in the departments that they're incurred in. Um, but I mean, that's just, I think about some of the even larger towns where, you know, if you just had one line item for IT expense in an IT department and it covered everybody. Now they're gonna want everybody to break them up and put them into different buckets. And it's just like, you're gonna capture the expense from one place nice and easy. Why, why overcomplicate it? So uh every, every CFO is gonna be a little bit different on that. So whoever you wind up getting, just be prepared that it could be their way of doing it. Um, doesn't mean it's wrong.
Yeah, I think that that's kind of what had happened is I think Karen was trying to capture it, uh, certain items as a PD expense. Uh, but you know, then the next person followed suit and put everything into PD. So it looked like Rich had uh spent a lot of money on computers. Um, and I, you can see the detail of, you know, under the admin IT, I think it's page four. If anybody does wanna look at that, you can see what's, you know, monthly support and, and our, you know, Karen does a really good job of I think naming things uh pretty accurately or more specifically than we've seen in the past. So if you do go through, you can see what I was referring to with that IT support for the police specifically, that five hundred and five dollars, I think that was the unanticipated IT expense, the biggest one that we had for last year. Um, in addition to obviously, you know, the install cost for um all the new computers that we got. Um, so that's, that's really all I have. I
Okay.
One thing that I had a question about was that we seem to still be budgeting for, and again, I wanna talk to Karen. We seem to still be budgeting for that two thousand and fifty dollars for elections uh expenses, which doesn't appear to have been uh utilized for several years. So I don't know what had happened. Um, i- if we do pay a fee for our polling places, if we're not paying that fee anymore, you know, that again, it's only two thousand dollars, but it might be an item that um, you know, we could reduce if we need to save a few bucks in this budget cycle, but.
Thanks, Lisa. Paul, I, I'm gonna ask you, I guess, we didn't really invite the emergency squad in for any budget sessions, you know, there's, there's anything that they're gonna need or uh.
Well, um, I, I've been taking a little heat about them wanting a new ambulance and, and I've been arguing it with them. Um, although the one town-owned ambulance will reach uh twenty years old shortly, I think she's stout machine. Um, uh, I, and, and, and with that being said, you know, my argument with them was, you know, I said, uh, I, at this stage of the game, the volunteer ship there is barely sustainable. Um, we, they um aren't doing a, a great job. Um, I mean, there, those that they're doing a great job for what they can do with the numbers of volunteers that they have. It's just not a sustainable situation. Um, in my opinion, um, and I told them I, there's no way I can get behind uh the cost and the cost of new ambulances over the last two years because some of the new regulations have absolutely soared. I mean, you're talking two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I said, I couldn't personally justify spending that much taxpayers' money on, on the squad that may potentially not be there in two years. Whether it's two years, five years, um, next year, six months, i- it's really challenging to say. Um, and that was my opinion and I told them that and I've shared that with them and I'm kinda in hot water on the subject matter and I I, I'm one vote. I said, you know, come down and plead your case to the town. I said, but I'm telling you right now, I don't think the squad is, is sustainable for too much longer and I can't get behind that ambulance. My personal opinion. I mean, yeah, again, there, it's basically being run with six or seven people. Um, and several of us wanna step way back. Um, you know.
Right too, with probably all the people too, right?
Right, absolutely. I, yeah, I mean, there's, there's four of us that are uh sixty-two plus. You know, there's quite a few pe- people there that have been there for, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, you know, I'm, I'm darn near year eighteen. Um, and it's a lot. Uh, and, and again, that's my opinion. So they're not asking for anything. Uh, I haven't seen anybody show up at a meeting to start to beg for the ambulance. Um, so I think everything's pretty much A-OK at this stage of the game.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to do it with you, Paul, if you want to. Maybe we should schedule a meeting with them and maybe we should start talking long-term. I mean, cause I don't wanna just one day wake up and find out that there's no.
Well, there, 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 there's been, over the last two years, there's been, and, and I'll be the first one to tell you too. Some of us on the squad ten years ago saw this coming and wanted to prep for this day and have met nothing but backlash and this and that and so on and so forth. Um, they could have put a plan in five, six, seven years ago that would have made uh the squad sustainable. Mind you, it would have been paid. Um, but they could have started uh the soft billing a long time ago and built up quite a bit of reserve and would have been able to afford that. I mean, there's a system in place to cover the town. Um, and there was with that, St. Luke's was really supposed to develop a nine-one-one ambulance down here locally. Um, cause Philsburg is also super stressed. Uh, LoPAC on basically folded their backup for a couple of days a week. Um, you know, i- the, the, the whole state of EMS is there, uh, but St. Luke's kinda uh uh got crushed with a variety of different things. And they, they have met some opposition from Philsburg, which i- is a shame because I know Po-Hat's not happy with him, the time and this and that and and stuff. And they're just, they're also really not as sustainable numbers. So eventually it's gonna fall onto St. Luke's, but I've also heard the northern part of the county is getting a lot of hay, help uh from the uh oh uh Atlantic healthcare system. They're putting an ambulance up there uh to help uh answer nine-one-one calls and things. And there was chatter about that they might consider coming this far down too. Um, so there are long-term talks with St. Luke's and Atlantic about trying to uh get paid coverage because again, the volunteer numbers are just, they're dwindling. Um, but with that being said, our, uh, you know, we have uh ninety-eight rescue has a one ambulance that's three years old. Uh, one ambulance that again, will be twenty years old. Um, but it's an F-four-fifty. She's stout. Uh, a couple of things are a little out of date on it, but uh I, I think she's got several years to go as a backup ambulance. Um, and in the wintertime, that's actually our primary ambulance because of the weight. It's so heavy, it does snow real good. And as a, a, a last resort, we have a, a nineteen ninety-four ambulance uh when the situation calls for it. Um, but that's certainly not a solution ambulance. Um, so that kinda brings a, with what's going on there.
If you ever wanna have, start having meetings with a group, whatever, I'm more interested to go with you and, cause I think it's an, it's an important long-term concern with people uh that when, if they need an ambulance, they get one. So.
No, no, I, I understand that. Um, and with that being said, yeah, I, you know, I will bring that forward. Uh, you know, if they wanna meet with you and everything else like that. And even though I'm the liaison to the squad, I'm pretty sure they don't want me to be part of that conversation. Um, but we can cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Uh, I guess, here, here's my question, I guess, to you, John. What? Do you know, cause we don't have a CFO really. Do we know what our fixed increases are? What I mean by like insurances, like, you know, our our contributions to the state healthcare for the employees, the pensions, if there's that, what the increases are there? Uh, any contractual? And, and we kinda know for the chief's budget contractually for the police. I, I guess, we, we always have numbers that we have actually no control over. Do, do you know what those numbers are, John?
At this point, I do not. That's something that the CFO provides to me and uh have not seen anything. I have a, I have seen it in another town or two, so I do believe the numbers are available. Or the notices went out of what the increases are gonna be, so you should be able to get that information.
Um, I was hoping to follow up with Karen today, actually, um, and possibly sit down with her. Uh, I, I don't think she's available this weekend, but perhaps next weekend, so we could get some of those numbers out to all of you.
And, and with that being said, Bob, I think over the last three years, it's traditionally, we knew that we were a point and a half obligated for those costs. Uh, and, uh, and that, I think that's been pretty consistent for the last three years.
Yeah. Well, last year we got slammed pretty good with pensions. I'm hoping we don't get that this year.
Yeah, last year it's like so.
Last year, right?
Yep, yep.
We got slammed last year, so I'm hoping that number's not that high this year.
Hey, Bob, I had a question for Lisa in reference to the file cabinets. Could I ask that?
Mm-hmm, sure. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't even think of follow-up.
That's okay. Um, Lisa, last week when we were doing um with Joe and he was going over certain reports that he should be entitled to from Finelli, this had come up one of my first budget meetings, I'm gonna say two years ago. And you had brought up, and I know from where I work, we're supposed to, the Greenwich Township is supposed to get any and all plans of work that's done by Finelli that we pay for or that he's even involved in. Is there a file cabinet designated for him so that we can start moving forward and getting what we're in, we're supposed to get as well as past things that we need that like Joe needed, if he had, he can just take a look at. I really think that you brought it up. We didn't follow through and we should start following through on things that we're entitled to as a township from our professionals. Uh, what's your thought?
I think it's, I think it's very important and uh should be something that's centrally located probably in my, in my file room so that, you know, Joe and I and the township committee can access as they need to. There currently is not. When I came on board, you know, one of the first things I reported to you guys is that there's essentially no engineering files in my office. I didn't know if we might find a lot of that in the records review from the school. I did not. So currently, to be honest with you, as I was sorting through the file room and everything, I took one of my cabinets and anything that I have received in my three years is now in a cabinet. But it's, it's very small. We have, you know, one box for Thomas Stewart Park, just very minimal. So to your point, yes, ultimately, I would like, you know, and they don't have to be necessarily on hand in our office. If it makes the most sense, I know that Bob and I would like to clean out the meeting room and get all those cabinets back out of there when we get this uh lease agreement squared away. But yes, there should be several filing cabinets designated just for, you know, a, a section for roads and a section for the parks and that sort of thing.
Yeah, you know, Joe had mentioned that to me last week too when I was speaking with him. I forgot about it. Um, can you and Joe come up with a list on what we want from him and prepare a letter and I'll, I'll sign it. We'll send to uh Mike, ask him to get those in the building?
Yeah, what I think I actually will do, uh, if it's okay with you guys, is I'll consult with my engineer in Bloomsbury and have him help me come up with a list because I might not think of everything or go through my filing cabinet over there and come up with a list, but that, that sounds great.
And then moving forward, he gives them to us.
Right.
Yeah. You know, I should go out. Does anybody have, I don't think we need a vote. Does anybody have any objection to the way we preparing a list and I'll send, I'll sign the letter saying that the township uh committee is requesting that these files be brought in-house so that, cause Joe said it does slow down the process. When he gets calls for uh certain things like where he, he says, I know I can go and mark where they are, but I don't have the official paperwork and, you know, the, the, the blueprints and stuff. So I, I think it is important we get in for expediency as well. I, rather than have to contact outside all the time. Anybody have any objection to sending this letter?
No.
No.
The only caveat I'd like to add to that, Bob, is that as you know, recently when we discussed those change orders and I was you know, requesting backup for that, I was advised that we would be charged for those documents to be gathered for us. Uh, which I think, you know, the cost of us getting a copy. I'm sorry?
We already paid. Uh, what, didn't we already pay for that when we got the original bill for the preparation?
I would, I would think that, that, that you, you jump to my point. I think that we should assume that it's covered in the money that we've already.
Yeah, I would think everything that we, you're asking for has already been paid for at least once, at least once.
If that's the case, then uh, if somebody's gonna charge me for something that we already own.
Correct.
Then we'll just talk for a while piece for next year.
I agree.
I completely agree. I just wanna throw it out there. I wouldn't wanna send a letter and then uh get a bill for that. So I think we should just make sure that that's, that's clear.
And, and I'm willing to meet, wants to come in and meet and discuss why he feels he should get paid. You know, I, and I'm willing to hear him out, but uh the, the fees that we've paid, I would assume always includes copies for us. And if it wasn't, I'd like to know why and how the fee schedule is set up. So, but we could talk to him about that. Let's just get the letter ready.
Yeah, it's usually just a matter of, uh, you know, the normal course of business. You know, the job gets completed and the clerk's office gets a copy. So.
Yeah. So, and, and probably in that letter, we should include there that going forward, we would always anticipate receiving probably the work done.
Agreed. Yep.
Okay. Anybody have anything else that we need to go to?
I just had one old business item. Um, we were discussing last week the T-ball field. And moving it, um, Tim, Tim Flynn requested that we um purchase a portable backstop and have the T-ball games at the new park. So, um, I could have him look at the portable um backstops. I know they range if, if you get one that's collapsible from like five hundred dollars to the aluminum ones that we have, I think are like fifteen hundred to two thousand. I, I looked at the condition at the, the middle school, the backstop. And I, I, I wouldn't wanna bring that backstop over. It's rusted and trees are growing through it. I, I don't know. I don't think it would look, the, the aesthetics wouldn't, wouldn't look nice if we brought it over there.
Right.
I could have him, if you want, um, you know, start pricing them out.
Yeah. See, some prices are ready for the February, man.
If you, uh, if you're considering a recreation purchase like that, let me, I'll remind you, you do have a trust fund, the Recreation Commission Trust. Uh, it's got more than enough money in there to cover even a higher-end one. So you have money.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Anything else to bring up today budget-wise, Frank?
Yeah, yeah. Um, sooner or later, we, I think we gotta address, regardless of what happens at Thomas Stewart Park, we gotta address the basketball courts in the municipal park.
Right.
Um, they gotta be fixed. Regardless of what goes on at Thomas Stewart Park, we gotta do something with them. So I think we gotta start looking at, and we, it could come out of open space. Doesn't have to affect the general fund. But I think we gotta, I talked to Frank Pinto and I, I asked him if he knows um a professional resurfacer of basketball courts. He knows somebody that did it in another town. And I asked him to get us an estimate. Um, just for us to uh look into. Just wanna put it out there, put it on the radar that. I think we gotta do something. We can't just let them rot, right? I don't get. So anyway, that was all I wanted to mention.
Where, where, where we wanna go from here, John? Uh, this is my feeling or not feeling, but what I'm used to, I guess, the budget process. I always say we only do once a year, so I never really learn it. Um, can, can we come up with what everybody, what we've done in the past, what everybody proposed and then we, we, we chiseled down. Is everybody in agreement? That's what we need to do at this point? Look and see what we're, what's being asked for and then we gotta prioritize and come down to what we feel is a reasonable budget.
Yes.
Well, I'm usually. Um, and this is part of conversation here. I had asked John, and I know uh not really been thrilled to death about even.
uh, not really been thrilled to death about even contemplating a tax increase or anything else like that. Um, but I'd still like to hear what John's numbers on, on the road department, the fire department and the police uh, station that was going to, the municipal complex and the road situation. Um, what, what did you actually find out bottom line on that?
I had sent you over an email with, um, with some numbers. I don't know. I, I'm assuming you haven't gotten it if you are asking.
No, I got it, but everybody else hasn't gotten it.
No, they did.
That to come from you.
Okay, well, we looked at us, was it a sick, I'm opening it up right now, so give me one second here. Uh, we looked at what it would be to issue $6 million worth of new debt. Uh, and it was split between the purchase or the construction of a new fire police building. And I believe it was four million and change in roads. So the estimated useful life is where you're going to need it to eventually get bond counsel in. But from everything I've heard or I'm hearing, it sounds like the blended useful life will be about 15 years. So if you had a 15-year payback period on something like that, uh, you would be anticipating roughly 475,000 to 500,000 a year for the next 15 years. And that includes principal and interest. So, um, you know, it, it's, it's a big nut. It's at two and a half percent interest rate, which you could probably do a little bit better in today's market. That's just being conservative at that, that high of a rate. But, uh, you know, one tax point is $59,000. So if looking to add 495,000 in year one, you're looking at 8.3 cent, you know, eight points of a tax increase.
Right. And we shouldn't have building the police department and the firehouse. Shouldn't that be a 30-year though?
Well, again, it's, it's a, it's a blended use. You're, you're looking at an ordinance that has either road repair or resurfacing. Uh, if it's a road, if, if it's a 10-year road project, uh, it's, what would I say? It was for road, uh, resurfacing. And then if there was reconstruction, it was a 20-year project. So I don't know where that would fall in with the weighted average of that. All right, but the bigger piece of the bond is over four million of roads. So you'd have to anticipate that the, the larger chunk of that is going to be a 10-year payback period. But then you offset it with a 30-year payback period for the smaller piece. And when you take the weighted average, it was coming out to roughly 15 years.
All right, I suppose, can, and again, if you don't have it now, it's not a big deal. Suppose we take the roads out. Um, what about the municipal complex? Well, the municipal complex is really closer to 2 million.
I didn't put that together, uh, easy enough to do before next meeting or before, you know, Monday, you know, I can get you something on Monday of what that would look like, because that is a bigger, that's a longer payout period. Uh, again, at this point, you'd be locking in some really great rates, so money is virtually cheap to borrow right now. Um, so I would even, you know, if you're looking at a $2 million municipal project, then, um, then you could be looking, you'd be doing all right at 30 years. You're not going to be increasing it, I wouldn't think by more than two cents a year.
All right, if you could narrow down those numbers for us, that'd be great.
Absolutely, will do.
Okay, just one thing on the municipal um, project. I mean, me personally, I couldn't see doing fire and police without doing a municipal building with it. I mean, the municipal building is the people's building. That municipal building, I, I think there was just a joke made of it in order, by John in one of our meetings, how it's like, because he works in a lot of different, uh, John, uh, drill.
Okay.
Facilities, how, how it's like the, I guess, you know, shabbiest one to, to use a better, not to use a bad term, but to me, to do that without adding a municipal building, if we're gonna, if we're gonna even look at it, I'm not even saying I'm for right now, anything, but to not include that when that municipal building is basically a shed that's run down, to me would be a tragedy. Um, I, I wouldn't personally want to look at fire and police and then we're going to tell the people of the town that from now on, you're still going to meet in a, in a shed and this is your building. You know what I'm saying? They're the ones footing the bill, but this is what you're going to get and here's what the police and the fire are going to get. If we're going to look at it, it doesn't make any sense to me just to look at police and fire. That's, I don't know what everybody else's feeling is on it.
I have no problem looking at the whole, the whole gambit like that.
Yeah.
Me either. Unfortunately, now, a really bad time for us. And talk about increasing our taxes, but I absolutely agree. We need to look at everything. It is, it is our building to go to and it's horrible. It, it.
Well, with, with that being said though, maybe the municipal portion of that complex could come just a skosh later. Um, because it just, it does change the dynamics of parking, retention pond and things of that nature. But, you know, so maybe you do phase one first and five years from now do phase two, um, because there's enough space up there for that and we're not biting the bullet all in one shot. I, I just threw that out there. I'm not saying one way or another. I, it would be great to have a new municipal complex. I think it would look awesome. Um, but, you know, maybe it can be done over two periods of time versus one.
Well, one, one of the things I'll suggest that I'll do is I'll, I'll do it at 2 million over a 30-year period and then I'll do another one at three, at 3 million over a 30-year period. Just so you have some kind of idea if the cost come in at three, which we weren't expecting, at least you'll have an idea of what you'd be looking at in today's dollars.
You mean 3 million, 3 million? 3 million, assuming, uh, the municipal part of it's included. Is that what you're saying, John?
No, that's just my fees. Yes, yes. Because I don't know, you know, I, I, what am I? I'm an accountant. I'm not an architect.
I'm wondering if you have insight of what a municipal part would include.
No, I, you know, we, we had one done in, uh, Freedon. Freedon has a municipal building that is built into their fire department, uh, not like Bloomsbury. It, you know, it was actually a, a planned structure, half and half. So, um, they did one about six years ago now. I can at least look and see what that cost them. Uh, and that's pretty, that's pretty good size office space to go with a pretty good sized fire department, so.
Yeah, and with all that, with all that being said, I agree with Lillian, uh, and I, I think Paul said it before he even made his statement. I don't think right now is the time to address any of that, but definitely something that has to be addressed. That's not saying this year, you know, with the COVID situation, a lot of people hurting. Um, may have to put it off a year, in my opinion, but I just, to me, and I know Paul, you mentioned two phases, but to me, to approve any kind of funding without giving the people of the township who are going to foot the bill their, their, you know, uh, gathering place, for lack of a better word, um, would be, I, I just, I don't think that would be the right thing to do. So. Okay, that's it. That's all I had.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Bob, can I mention a couple of little things I just thought of? Um, it's very small items, but we understand, as you know, that our, our senior group has disbanded. Uh, so that is currently in the budget still at a thousand dollars. I don't really think, I think we paid something toward, uh, their rental use or something at the Legion in the past. So that expense will also be gone. And I, I didn't see that that was coming out of that thousand dollar allotment, so there might be an additional savings there. Uh, Joe had mentioned last week about the renting that piece of equipment to do the storm drain cleaning. And we have a lot of money in the Clean Communities grant line item that has been, you know, just sitting there and not used. And I believe if I'm correct, I think it's 25% of that grant each year can be used for storm drain cleaning, so we might be able to cover part of that. Um, and I, I also, I, I believe I sent all that bonding information from John Mooney to all of you on, uh, the 30th. So if you want to check back to your email, if you didn't get to see that in advance, that's where that is. And also another little thing, Brian connected with someone who we're hoping to meet with on Tuesday from Service Electric, potential cost savings there with our, with our phones or whatever uh, they handle for that for us. So we'll keep you updated on those things.
Well, the one, with me news, maybe we, we should, says that was rental fees. Can we transfer that, John, into next, this year, which reallocate that to pay the rental fees we're going to have for storage over the Legion?
Lisa, I'm mute.
Somebody muted, John?
Sorry about that. No, I muted myself when I'm not talking.
He's trying to blame me, John.
Yeah, it should not be an issue.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we're, you can then reallocate it over for rental, uh, that's what it was basically for anyway, and we're going to rent the same space for files, so, uh,
Yeah.
let's just keep, but reallocate it, John, okay?
Yeah, move it over.
Yeah. Unless anybody's, you know, I, I just say, I just think out loud and I, I don't want to cut anybody out.
That's good. Now we're down to a $3,800 expense.
Thank you, Lisa.
Here, I, I guess I'm back. Does anybody else have anything else? We're back to how did we get this list on what we are proposing, where we wanted to get to where we want to be is, we don't really have a CFO to depend on this year. Is that something you, where's John or?
Well, Bob, I mean, uh, sorry to interrupt, but we, you know, we are still paying Karen uh, her salary. She still is on board. I know she's a little overwhelmed right now, but I don't, I don't think it would be out of line for us to ask her to take these numbers from all the different departments and plug them into her worksheet. And I think she'd be happy to do that for us. And then we could at least get that basic outline over to John.
That would be great.
Yeah, I could run with it from there, yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to her.
Can I ask a, a, a question in this meeting about where we're at with a, a search for a new CFO? Or is that taboo here? I don't know.
Uh, I, I know that the people doing the interviews, Brian and Lillian and Lisa have done some things. I don't know what, what you guys are willing to discuss in public, though, since it's personnel, obviously.
Yeah, I don't, that's why.
Have any answers?
I, I think I can, I think I can say that we have an additional applicant who has expressed interest and, uh, we're going to try to set up a Zoom interview with her hopefully for Monday or Tuesday and see where we're at with that. We also are awaiting feedback from our meeting with, uh, Alpha council members the other night. So, um, if anybody wants anything additional, let me know, but that's where we're at.
Are we still using, are we still using Brad Perrone as a consulting, a consultant in interviewing?
Uh, we, we can, you know, Brad has made himself available to us.
I would recommend that.
Yeah, he wasn't available for our other round of interviews, but I, I do keep in touch with Brad about it, so.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I just throw this out there, if you need any, if you wanted to run any resumes past me, I've, I've helped other people in the past, all the municipalities. If there's somebody that you're, you know, on the fence about, you know, I, I know a lot of people who interview for these jobs, so um, more than happy to give you my two cents if, if you need it.
Thanks, John. I think we were kind of, uh, getting that a little secondhand through Karen, through her conversations with you, so we appreciate your.
So do we want to schedule another Saturday morning in like a couple of weeks to go over what we're talking about? Or do you want to do it during a regular meeting? And regular meetings sometimes get long on their own, so, uh.
I say schedule another meeting for just budget if we can.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine next week. I'm any Saturday.
Let's give them a couple of weeks to get everything prepared, so. Next week would be the 13th. Is it 20th too early, John, or 27th? And is there more people available, I guess?
Uh. I, I might have one conflict on the 27th. So I'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, both dates are after our February meeting, so I guess we could even go to the first Saturday in March if we had to, but the 20th is okay with you, John?
At this, yeah, there's, I have a, an office meeting. It's our annual meeting. It's either the 20th or the 27th. I don't know if they've struck a date yet, so that's why I'm.
Is the sixth going out too far, you think, John? For budgeting?
I think the sixth, um, no, I, I, I think you could have the, I think if you have Karen on board, she might want to get you something sooner than later, so you might actually have the information pretty quickly. Um, but again, uh,
The opposite, that maybe she's going to be overwhelmed and we might take her longer, but I don't know.
No, I, I mean, it's just a matter of, of, of taking last year's budget and then, uh, adjusting salaries by two, whatever she's going to do. And if there's any expenses that come in from the department head, she could get that in there and get it to us. I don't think it's going to be overly difficult. I just think she'd want to get it done sooner than later. Um, but again, the sixth is fine. Um, you, you let me know. And, and if I, if I have.
It's, it's two weeks too quick, the 20th?
If you, hold on, I'll just make sure, um, I'll, I'll email somebody real quick and see if I, or text somebody. So just give me a minute.
Or Bob, if you want to, if, if, if the township committee are all available for the 20th or the 27th, uh, you could leave it up to me. That way I would have time to also make sure Karen's available.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, why don't we just pick, why don't we authorize you to pick the date, once we know from the CFO and the auditor on the mutual dates? And, and how's everybody else for the 20th and 27th?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good. I mean, I, I was going out farther figuring that Karen, it might mean the time, but if they could have it, I'd rather get it done sooner than later. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Yeah, me too.
I agree.
So, so what do we need? Do I need a motion, Lisa, to authorize or we're just, you're just going to?
You guys are authorizing me the 20th or the 27th at 8:00 AM, right, Bob?
Yeah, and the availability of the CFO and the auditor.
Auditor, perfect. And I, I assume you want Joe and Rich there as well?
Yeah, I think so, because if we're cutting, we want, you know, we might have to ask them what they want to prioritize and what we're cutting.
Okay, I'll find out what date works for everybody and advertise.
I, I don't want to arbitrarily take stuff out of somebody's budget if they would, you know, if they come up with an alternative saying, if you got to take seven grand from me, I'd rather have you take it from here than there, so.
Right, right. Okay.
Frank, um, one thing you might be interested in, uh, Mayor Slack of Poohakon Township reached out to me the other day. Um, apparently Alpha is, uh, uh, in their land use process, they're looking at warehouses also. Um, and I don't know if you're, and, and the project's kind of been talked about for two years, but they're getting ready to chat about it. But they're going to need a, a, a big variance like the one in Poahat wanted, putting a bigger footprint on what's permitted. Um, and he made it sound, I mean, he made, well, Poahat's not in favor of it, but just as they're not in favor of granting that in their community. Mind you, he's not on the land use board at, at this time there. Um, but he wanted to make us aware that they were going to apply for relief to put a much larger building, uh, square footage wise and height wise, um, in that community, uh, and they were going to need a variance to, for that footprint.
This is, this is madness. This is absolute madness.
And just to put it in.
Every frigging town is going to put warehousing in.
Right, well, and, and Alpha, again, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but, um, but their industrial drive section, they're definitely, you know, been pro for it. But you know where industrial drive is, where performance tire is there, and it goes all the way back by Beeler and everything else like that? Uh, JG Oliver, Ferguson's back there, Lehigh, uh, Printing. Um, there's a 100 and Transformer, a, and it's backed by Alpha's dump, uh, where they dumped it. You, you got an idea where that is?
I do.
Okay, well, anyway, the proposal is going to be from where there's currently all that and it's going to come all the way around to behind the Alpha Cup. That little restaurant there on 519 on the left-hand side. Wow. That's all in their industrial zone.
I don't understand the people making these decisions. I mean, it's unbelievable.
So, but he wanted me to let you know, that's not my fight. I know that you're definitely, you know, on that side of things. I'm passive.
Paul, it should be your fight, because you're dealing with all the warehouse trucks, just like everybody else. It should be everybody's fight. It should be everybody's fight.
No, I, I understand that, but I, I've picked and chosen other fights to get involved in.
Let me ask you this, though. If we do decide to, um, to, uh, send John there and to look into it and oppose it, would Poahat be willing to join us?
I, I can certainly, I can certainly reach out to Mayor Slack. Um, I think he was looking for some support.
Oh, well, that's great. Well.
I can reach out to Councilman Stillo, too.
Yeah, I think Brian start talking, I mean, this is, me and Brian, I mean, me and Brian are talking, we started putting together a letter that we're gonna, we're gonna send all the surrounding towns into the news. That, I don't, I don't even know what to say. I don't know what to say. I know that Poahat wants to put in a warehouse over at, uh, where the shopping center was. I know that Pohat wants to put in a warehouse over at, uh, where the shopping center was, the Phillipsburg Mall.
Right.
And and Lopat is, um, Lopat is, is opposing it, which is stopping it apparently.
Right, and Lopat actually, believe it or not, just did something, and I don't know how you can change. It, without it being considered spot zoning or anything, but I think they just successfully caboose a, a potential warehouse behind. Um, Berry Plastics and stuff where they were, I didn't catch all the details, but something got done there that's. Not going to allow that to happen.
Well, I think if you change, before you get the application, you're okay, it's.
Yeah, you're okay, yeah.
Right.
Application and you say, wait, we're going to change it.
It's only spot zoning if you change it to bring in an applicant.
Right, right, so, okay.
Just as an FYI, just as an FYI, Phillipsburg just granted, uh, warehouse zoning, more.
Right.
Huh?
You're at, I didn't.
I'll look up the, I'll get the article, it was a multi-use, but one of the uses was warehousing.
Yeah, it wasn't that back there on Hudson Street?
You probably know better than me, Paul, the location.
I think it was back on Hudson Street, they want to do a big old complex back there, yeah.
It's just, I don't understand, I don't, I guess these people don't live here, you know, do they live here? Do they not care? I mean, we're complaining about trucks right now, we're at, we're at ten percent buildout right now. And we're complaining about trucks and getting cops, we're not even at a hundred percent buildout, we're not even close to it, I don't know, this.
I mean, I, I drove into Phillipsburg today at six in the morning and there was at least six or seven tractor trailers going towards Easton.
I'll, I'll go on twenty-two every day, and I watch, I've never have not seen a truck. The one group, I think it's called Millis, going in and out of that new thing, I've never been on twenty-two where I don't see one, at least one of those trucks. Anytime of the day, morning, nights, weekends, I actually look for them now, and I see one at least every time I go. Just down twenty-two. But anyway.
Somebody needs to let the freeholder Kern know, because I don't think he'd be for it, right? Because he's been adamantly against all this stuff.
I mean, I, I could reach out to them, so.
John Mooney. John Mooney still on, Frank?
Twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Twenty-seventh is the date?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as it's good with Karen, let's plan on the twenty-seventh, and we'll send out an email, everybody, let us know that the twenty-seventh is good, right?
All right, and then I'm going to let John know about this, um, that we're going to, we're going to oppose an increase, I'm assuming, right? In, in any kind of variance increase.
Yeah.
All right, we're all on board with that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, let's, anybody on Frank for public comment, anybody from the public on that you see?
No, nobody's on, no one, no one from the public is on.
To make it formal, I'm going to make a motion, we open public comment, anybody want a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nobody there, Frank, right?
Nope, nobody here, let me just check the waiting room, nobody in the waiting room, so we're good.
Okay, I make a motion, we close public comment, anybody have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Well, everybody have a good, healthy, happy weekend, enjoy your Super Bowl and, uh, see you at the regular meeting, I guess, thanks for everything, everybody.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
If they want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, see you later.
Thank you, bye-bye.